All right, well, welcome to the March 11th Planning Board Meeting in Ashland, Massachusetts. Tonight, we have public hearings, Zero McGonco Site Plan Review, which I believe they want to continue, right?
Yes, Dale, I can speak to this. Yes, I've been in contact with the, just as a little review for this. This project is obviously at the top of McGonco, and in 2016, the owner permitted a building, and he went through the correct process and he received the site plan review. And he went to the design review board and he got a vote there. And then also, he came to the planning board and decision was rendered and a positive decision was rendered. With that said, the applicant never acted upon his site plan. And so after two years, that site plan has lapsed. And so when I, when the applicant, this is all happened, you know, before I arrived. When I got here, I looked at the previous decision and I obviously came to the conclusion that they need to recertify, I mean, not recertify, but reapply for their site plan approval process. In doing so, I've asked them for some updated renderings of the buildings and some drawings, and they have not gotten those to the planning board, to our office. And so therefore, in discussions with the applicant's attorney, George Connors, I requested that he, the applicant, requested continuance from the public hearing. And so tonight, they, I've been in contact with Mr. Connors, Attorney Connors, and they are requesting a continuance to the next possible planning board meeting, which will be two weeks from now. I would be hoping that I would be able to get rendering submitted by then. However, it, I am still waiting, and we are in still kind of in a holding pattern. So I think until we get the information that is needed to move forward, I am going to ask them to continue in that holding pattern and not, and not, and have them present and or, you know, open the public hearing at a further date, I would say.
Right, so what date is that? Excuse me? March?
Our next planning board meeting is going to be March 25th.
Okay, so they're not, they're, they're submitting something different, not just resubmitting what was approved, right?
They are, no, they are submitting the, they are submitting pretty much the, the same, very close to the same plan that was, excuse me, I'm trying to find my volume, but I'm not having too much left.
That's okay, I just, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, no, Dale, I'm sorry. They, they are submitting pretty much the same plan from 16. However, and from the application process in 16, I believe they did not come forth with a quality rendering that the planning board now is looking to analyze. And so therefore, I am pressing them to submit some better details and architecturals to the board.
Okay. So then, I guess we'll see if anyone has a motion to continue. Zero McGonco Public Hearing until March 25th, I guess that'll be 7:15?
Correct.
So moved?
Unmute.
So moved?
Second.
Call in favor?
Trisha Kendall, I.
Akshmi Krishnan, I.
Ipabanket, I.
Joe Ruberton, I.
It'll be, and I pass this 5:00. Okay, now we're gonna have a downtown zoning amendment discussion. And do you wanna, Pete, you wanna kind of start that out, or Joe?
Yeah, I'll just, um.
Here we're at.
Good for Peter to do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I think I'll just kind of set the table a little bit, Dale, thank you. So, so obviously, this is our first meeting since we did that walking tour of the downtown. And since then, as Joe requested, that we sent out a couple, you know, review documents, which would include the ULI report that was done in 2017, the memorandum that MAPC put together for us regarding the zoning, and that we also sent out the most up-to-date and current redline version that we have kind of taken a look at. In conversations, I just kind of wanna talk about, you know, after the meeting, I know, I thought it was a very productive meeting first. But with that said, I, I know we were kind of getting down, at the meeting in the redline version that we have, we really talked, we were talking about setbacks, architectural details, and in many, you know, the elements that were going to, that are redlined, that we're really looking to update the zoning bylaw, right? After that walk, I felt like we were starting to talk about districts and moving, you know, maps and, and moving the areas around a little bit. And so after that meeting, I went back to our consultant and I kind of gave him an update on where the planning board was and what kind of has transpired on our walking tour of the town of Ashland. So it comes down to that, right now, we have about $5,000 left in our grant with MAPC to help us review indoor work with us to update the downtown Ashland bylaws. This project, I think, as everyone knows, stems from a planning grant that the town of Ashland received in 2019. I think it was F4 FY 2019, I think we received it in 2018 from departmental, the Department of Housing and Community Development Planning Technical Assistance Grants.
How much was the grant?
The grant was for about $25,000. And then we also partnered with MAPC and we got a grant for $10,000 from their technical assistance program. And so MAPC has, has worked with us, they've been on a number of meetings, they've put together that survey, which goes back to last summer. And so there's a little bit of money left, and I think there's enough money in the, in the pot or in the kitty to kind of help to get this board, get us over the finish line regarding the, the proposals that are being talked about, the setbacks, the architectural detailing, those elements of the update to the bylaws. I think if we get into the, and I think in doing that, I think with a couple more productive meetings and conversations, we could be ready for a town meeting. Town meeting is going to be on, I'm gonna admit, whack, they are in the waiting room, I'm sorry. And so with that said, town meeting this year is gonna be on June 12th, which is gonna be a Saturday, I think every, the town, and the select board are planning for a outdoor town meeting. And so getting Dale's porch bylaw going and getting a couple other things lined up to being on that town meeting warrant, I think we have the ability to get this downtown zoning on that warrant and hopefully bring it to the residents of Ashland. I personally think if we start going and looking at the actual zoning map and start tinkering with the sub-districts in the, as an overlay district, I think it's, that's gonna be a lot longer process. And I think we would be more or less looking for a fall town meeting. And I think also at that point, we're not gonna, we're gonna run out of grant money. And so I just kind of want to paint the broad picture of where we stand right now from a, from a office point of view of what's transpired, where everything is, and really kind of what's left within this grant funding that was, that was really helping us as a board to really kind of take the project across the finish line, I would say. But with that, I just kind of wanted to present to everybody where everything kind of stands, like I said, from the administrative point of view.
Oh, you're, what you're saying is we should focus on, narrow it down to some of these changes and some of the changes to like the drawings and how, how the zoning is that we talked about, right?
I think if we go back.
Not worry about making this into a base zoning or any of that right now, just clean up what we already have and go over what some of the stuff that we talked about at that meeting.
Correct, I think if we go back to the stuff that we were talking about six months ago, and what we've been working on is working with the language and the architectural detailing of the buildings and the setbacks, I think we have a good shot of getting, I think we can get this done, and I think we can move forward. If we start tinkering with the districting, the districting, I think that we're, we're going to, A, I know we are going to run out of grant money, and we are also going to not make it to spring town meeting, which is gonna be on June 12th. And so I think personally, from my opinion, we should refocus. I think it was great that we did a walk, but I think we should also just refocus on some of those elements that we were talking about, setbacks, architectural detailing, lot sizes, those elements that, that we can kind of bring back. And, and within a conversation I've, I had with the consultants, they're going to come back to us, hopefully at the next planning board meeting, and he'll be able to kind of, you know, give us, you know, you know, represent his final change, you know, his changes and what he kind of sees. And then hopefully, we'll probably, we could get this, you know, in line for, like I said, that spring town meeting.
So my suggestion is we just start going down this list and do like, because we've already talked about some of this stuff and looked at, I just start and work on setback requirements first, hash that out and see what we feel, and then building height, that's important, I think, because there's difference between height and stories, all that stuff. And then just go down the list and get what we can worked out on those important details that we can get the town, the next town meeting.
And really, the elements that, that we're talking about are the elements that Joe asked to put on the agenda in these bullet points. And if you look at the agenda tonight, you'll see the three bullet, the five bullet points. A, setback requirements, B, the uses, C, the building height, right? D, the design standards, we talked about massing, we talked about, you know, all those elements that we were going to bring in. And then E, we talked about the building detailing.
Really quick.
Yep.
Yeah, if we could put, I'm just suggesting, maybe we.
You want to share my screen?
Uses, no, if we could put uses at the end and do the other stuff first, because I think uses might tie into the making this overlay and the different overlays in the districts and what's, you know, I mean, if we concentrate on the setbacks, building height, the actual buildings and all that, that's already there, I think it might go a little quicker, and we can at least get that done. And then get, I think uses may run into different, all the different districts that are down there, and it might be a broader construction, broader conversation. We could put, just put that one for last, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay, Joe?
Sure.
That's your list. It's a good list.
Yeah, sure.
So we'll open it up for the planning board, this is a discussion, so we're gonna start with the planning board, and if anyone wants to start with the setback requirements that we talked about. Anybody?
Isn't this just kind of a strange, like, we don't have a bylaw in front of us, we don't have a map in front of us, we don't have images. That's how a setback, you know?
I'm gonna share, I'm gonna share my screen real quick.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna post them up. Post up what it is now.
I, I'm a little rusty, I'm sorry at sharing my screen. I apologize.
I mean, I thought it seemed like a lot of these things were, I, I thought, worked out with, you know, in our last meeting with, oh, with whoever was, who's guiding us through this process.
MAPC.
Yeah, that we've been tweaking this through, and that the site, the really, the walking around the site was just to kind of observe, not only observe some of these things in real life, but really was to look at the zoning in the districts. And so that was, it seems like, do we come to a lot of these conclusions in our discussion online? I mean, the ones we've been having, and the question really came, I thought, was about, the, the questions came up when we started talking about, do we make this base overlay or make that the base, or you know, whatever, and that's what got us out into the real world to look at things. So it seems to me that all these questions are really about, I mean, there's, there's a set of conditions that we kind of liked and agreed upon, we're like, yep, I think we kind of like this. But then when it came to apply to the actual line, the zoning, that's when we were like, hmm, I don't know, it's kind of hard to picture unless we get out there. So I'm not sure, we can look at the stuff, but I think we've already kind of done this, but.
Well, Trish, you're exactly right, we have done this. And I think, I think my goal is just to refocus tonight, understanding, have, getting, after getting a better understanding of what, how much left is in the grant and what our timeline is, and to kind of go from there. I think when we start talking about making that ADD a base zone, I think it opens up more discussion, and I don't know if that's something that, I think that is a discussion that's gonna take more time, personally.
And so, one, well, just one comment, just because it's been referenced a few times in terms of the grant money, like, to be clear, I mean, I think that, I think we've gotten a lot out of the grant money. I think even without a final report from this individual, we've gotten value from the grant money. So I, I guess I'm just, I don't see the running out of the grant money as a gating factor in this discussion or as a reason to do anything or not do anything. You know, if, if there's other reasons to move with the speed, that's fine. I just like, just to be clear, like, do we, let's get, like, we've got enough grant money to get the final report from them, and I think we've got their feedback. I, I'm not sure that we need to worry about any more grant money, right?
That's, that's a good point, that's a, that's a, it's a valid point of argument, Joe, and I, I agree with you, right? I think, I think it'll be, I think it'd be a nice, if, if we do move forward with this stuff, to go, I think it'd be a nice, it'd be nice to go to town meeting in a timely fashion after, you know, a report, a final report is granted by MAPC and then to move forward on, so it doesn't sit on a shelf and, you know, and then we could just say, hey, yes, we did this year-long process, we did a survey of the community, you know, we have this, you know, redline version of the bylaws, we've talked about this, and I think we, but we're gonna wait 12 months because we're gonna continue our conversation about, you know, the overlay, I mean, the, you know, making the overlay district the base district, right? We could do that, that's not a big deal. I think I'm almost splitting this up into two at this point, right? I think we could move forward regarding, looking at our timing and say, we could move forward with what we have right now and do this immediately and make these changes, right? And then I think as zoning is always fluid, we could continue to strategize and to look at any more changes we would like to make in our downtown. And in, and in some senses, I would, in some sense, Joe, I could say, we could continue the momentum, right? We, we continue to play and we continue to move forward looking at the downtown zoning area.
So that's what, this was, that's why I thought we were gonna, like, setback requirements, we're gonna look at what they, they suggested from all our things and review it and, and check it off and say, that's ready for town meeting, you gotta write it up or however we have to do it. But I thought we were gonna go through each one of these and see what we came up with and make sure it's, everybody's on board with it and it's ready to go. Is that kind of what?
Yeah, that's what I would like to do, to just, to make sure that everyone's on the same page and, and really.
Not really, not really redo anything or try to change it, but start with the setback requirements. What did we come up with on the setback requirement?
You know, just looking at that.
We walked around, is everybody still okay with that, or were there any issues that, that like, oh yeah, because we talked about, look how close that is to that house next door, and this one's right on the lot line, and these are right on the sidewalk. So I, if we go to the setback requirements, which is, it's on, you have it up somewhere, right?
Yeah, can you see my screen?
We just, we kind of go over that, and everybody is, anybody has any objections or wants to bring anything up since that walkthrough, then we would address that right now. If not, then we can move on to the next. Correct?
Correct.
And then I guess you guys are gonna put it in some kind of a, whatever form it needs to be in, the red changes to whatever spectrum we're doing and all, after we're done.
Yeah, we would have to put it in a redline version and present it, you know, which would be kind of more of a public hearing notice at town meeting that we can bring forth from more of a format, you know, from a, from a format standpoint. I think the biggest thing with like the setbacks, for example, right now, there's really no requirements for building setback. At the end of, after our surveys, and we walked around the downtown and looking at the two projects, you know, a couple of projects that have been done, I think everyone came to the realization that a setback would be nice off of the property line. The one thing that we propose is to put in and implement a setback at a minimum of eight feet to a maximum of 15 feet. So therefore, we're saying, yes, we want a setback, but we only want a setback between eight and 15 feet. So any new buildings are gonna come up and play a role in creating a, a streetscape, right, and, and creating more of a place-making atmosphere. But we don't want the buildings on top of the curb, on top of those curb lines. And I think that's the one thing we've heard, and I think that's what we're proposing.
And that's what we put on here, so it says eight to 15 on the front. Residential, 15 to 15, which sounds about residential.
Was it eight? Was, I thought it was more, I thought we had like 12.
That was eight.
It was.
There was eight plus the sidewalk.
Okay.
Eight up to the sidewalk.
I mean, eight.
Okay, eight not including the sidewalk, which is typically five feet, okay.
Eight on the property, not on.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, and the sidewalks typically, Trish, those would be in the public right away, so you're not.
Right.
Did my screen, did I stop scaring my, sharing my screen?
No, it's good.
Just a question, so the MAPC technical memo, didn't it already include all the recommendations that we have made? Because I see all that we recommended in their technical memo. So basically, we wanted to translate whatever isn't that technical memo into these bylaws, right? That's what we're gonna do now, right?
Correct, that's what we're, that's.
Yeah, because it seems like stuff that we already agreed upon, unless we decide to change something now. But looks like based on all the notes that I've taken, it's, the technical memo seems to have everything that we recommended them to do.
Yeah, that's what, that's good, that's what we're checking now. We're reviewing everything to make sure we can, we can put this one in the box, ready to go, one down the list, and then have it ready, so. And if anybody has any other ideas, since we walked around, looked. So this is what we came up with here, and if, if there's anyone that has any other, if not, then we can move to the next one.
I just have, I just have one question, was there a conversation of a situation where the pandemic has caused a requirement that the business would love to have a certain amount of setback? Was there a number that was thrown out, or was it just a kind of a thought starter? Peter, I thought you mentioned this during the walkthrough.
So, in what sense deeper, so the one, like, the pandemic has started.
How did that open space for people to kind of come out in the time of requirements?
Yeah, I will say, yeah, I think the number one, I think, I think that's kind of a, I think, A, I think, yes, obviously, the pandemic has forced people to indoor the development of outdoor seating, right? And so I think, you know, places that, in the, you know, places throughout the town, indoor Massachusetts, in the, the country, if there's an area in front of their store that they could put seats or kind of liven that streetscape, I think people have taken every advantage they can, and obviously, that's something that I believe will continue on. But the one thing that we did do deeper is, we looked at the 21 Main Street project, which everyone loves, and everyone kind of, kind of looked to at the project to kind of see the elements of that project. And we measured the setbacks off of that project, and I think on, on that averaged about eight, eight-foot setback. On one side, it was seven feet, on the other side, it was a 12-foot setback, and it just was dependent upon the property lines. And what the, what the bagel table has been able to do at 21 Main Street is put a couple chairs out there for people to kind of sit at and to create that environment with the street. And so I think those are where those numbers come from, right? And then MAPC and Chris, the planner, Chris, you know, he's done, he's been doing a number of these projects throughout, you know, New England, without, throughout the Boston metro area, in the, the towns that he's been working on, when they're starting to produce this form-based code zoning in the downtown, they're using those similar numbers, right? Anywhere from five, you know, six to eight to 12 feet setbacks. And I think we just landed on eight and between eight and 15, because we felt like that was an appropriate number for, for businesses to be able to put seats out on, on, in front of their businesses.
So, so, so one thing, one thing just to throw into this conversation is, as we talked about on the walkthrough, and you look at 128 Main, and you look at the setback of that building, and again, in that location, the sidewalk is gonna get bigger by five feet in the next 12 months. We're gonna redo the streetscape and the sidewalk's gonna push out five feet. And so that's true in front of 128 Main, but what would be useful to see and to understand in this discussion, right, is, you know, what, what is the plan for the rest of downtown, where are the sidewalks being expanded? Because if we know that all parts of a specific district are gonna get five more feet of sidewalk, we might have a different opinion on the setback for that particular zone. You know, I, I don't know, but I think it's like a, I think it's in a consideration point on the setback. Like, if we push for 15 and we get another five, and now we have 20 foot setback, is that too much? I mean, you can go, you can certainly go too far here, right? So I think, like, really, just kind of understand what's happening where, can kind of help in this discussion. I don't know if that's a point you can look at, but.
I think that 15 is just maximum, though, most developers are gonna go for that eight feet, you know? And that'll, then with the sidewalk that at least gets them to, you know, probably 13 feet. So with the minimum in place, I think, you know, we're probably a good starting point. So, but I think that's why we, you know, we talked about it certainly better than the zero that we had there before, so they were gonna, if we're gonna go through these things, at, at least in a discussion kind of way, we're gonna have to go through them a little faster, I think, you know, if, if we've already talked about some of this stuff. So.
Okay, and what's the, okay, the building height?
On the building height, you know, they, you know, it looks like there's, we just have it listed as three stories, and I'm wondering if we should have three stories slash 35 feet, or, you know, or whatever it is. So there's two limitations, you can't go over three stories and you can't go over the amount of feet that we're giving you. Because otherwise, they start to do some weird stuff to take advantage of things.
And what did this, Pete, what did they come up with on their report with that, what do we have?
Just a three-story, 38 feet or 45.
We've kind of gone back and forth on that, I like Trish's idea, and I've seen that throughout many towns and their bylaws.
And, and I think, I, I think if we want to limit it to, like, over with that Alden Street one, it was 32 feet or whatever, and then with special, with the planning board approval, you could go higher. Do we want to just set a limit?
I think there should be a limit, absolutely.
Right, a, a dead stop, and because then.
Oh, you mean?
You know, I mean, because if you're saying it's 33, 32 feet, but you can go 45 with a special permit, then you're really, it's 45. All they have to do is come in and say, we want it to go 45, and talk somebody into it, and who's on the board at the time and whatever. So I'm thinking maybe we want to consider just having a hard limit of a height. Does that make sense?
I think it does. I'm trying to find the original markups, I'm sorry for taking, not being prepared.
Because it's, it's, otherwise, it's, if it's with a special permit, you go higher, then that's the height that you can go, because they can just come in and talk whoever's on the board at the time into it, then that's how high the building's gonna go. So if we want them a little bit lower, we should just make it, you know, 36 feet or what, you know, lower. What do we say the town hall is, again? Forty-two?
Town hall, I think it's about 42, 40, yeah, so I think a max height in downtown that makes sense is about 38 feet. And I can kind of.
Did we go over? Did we go over this on the or did we?
We kind of briefly talked about it, I think, and I'm trying to go back. I'm trying to Dale quickly go back and go through the presentations. When we talked about actually the height. I think.
And anybody else have an opinion on that? I mean, what the max height should be or we should have still have the option? Should we make it lower and then they have an option if they can come in? I mean, because if you want to keep them lower, then we make it, you know, thirty feet or whatever, and they want to go thirty-five or thirty-eight, they have to come in.
Well, thirty, you know, thirty-five, two and a half stories, three thirty-five feet is a norm for residential construction. So I mean, not like single family houses residential construction. So it seems a little odd that we would have it at thirty-five feet to me. When these buildings are more likely have a higher first floor because of retail spaces or something like that.
Yeah, I don't know the numbers all the time.
Yeah, so thirty-eight feet seems, you know, at least a good starting point. I mean, this to me is something that, hey, maybe. MACP or whatever it is can can actually check some of our numbers on that, you know, like, okay, most communities actually have it at this. And this is why, you know, but that we have a note that we want the height somewhere in this area, double check our math that we got it right. But I think above thirty-five feet below, it's I think it's somewhere between thirty-five and forty-two. So.
Yeah, and and Trish, I just to stop you real quick, I I looked back at the presentation that we have from last this past December. And we kicked, we were, we were totally kind of settled at thirty-eight. And so looking at that.
Then let's let's put it at three stories thirty slash thirty-eight feet.
Okay.
And, you know, and then we can have a final review of it, but we have a number in there for now.
And then anything over thirty-eight feet would be a special permit, very similar to what we did at Alden Street. So if they.
So then thirty-eight is not the the limit.
So Dale is talking about no height. You cannot go higher.
Thirty-eight feet, that's it, dead stop, nothing.
Thirty-eight feet tops?
Yeah.
I like it.
They build within that and we don't have to go review it and say, can we give it, make exception and all that stuff? It's just we're happy with thirty-eight max, then that's where we're at.
So one point of context, I mean, if you go back to the Alden Street discussion, the project that was permitted on Alden Street with Charles Muto. Um, I believe he was, I think that building was, was it thirty seven feet as approved?
Forty-one or forty-two somewhere it was.
I don't think so. Was it?
Yeah.
That building as approved was forty-two feet. As tall as town hall.
Yep, and that and Trish brought a good point during that was she could because it was. You know, by right, it could go thirty, whatever, five, I don't remember.
It was seven foot difference, I thought.
But but with an approval, they can go higher. So I think it's just a a height, a maximum height that we want. We don't want a building over this height. And then we just figure out what that is and then go with that.
Well, my argument at the time was that if we allow them to go over the by right. They better have something good for us, not just a pretty building. You got to do a pretty building no matter what you do. You better be given a gift to the town and it better be something good. So but it went through anyway. So that that was my argument at the time. So, you know, maybe it's a straight thing, but the thing about like doing a straight. Here's the height, don't even ask us for more because we can't give it to you. Then that that if that's how we feel about downtown, then absolutely, that's what we should do, make no exceptions. If we're, you know, in between somewhere, then it has to be, and it does depend on, I guess, who's on the board. But it has to be like, hey, you can go over this if you're providing twenty-five percent affordable. Otherwise, don't talk to us because you can't. You know, but maybe that comes in somewhere, you know, somewhere else.
There is incentives to to have a have it set lower and then they can go higher. Advantages some ways.
In the past, in the past discussions on height, I mean, people have argued and said that. You know, nothing should be built downtown that's taller than town hall. So are you sure on the forty-two feet, Peter, for town hall? It's not forty-five?
Joe, I I don't have the, I have the plans in the office. I can go and dig out the plans I next.
I believe it's whatever the zoning says the max we can go with a special permit. I think that's about town hall height. Because I remember, I think I was there when we changed that like four years ago. And when we were working on heights and made it so that you could have. You could have an exception and go as tall as town hall and that was it. So. And what's it forty-three now or what's the max? With approval of forty. Forty-three, forty-five?
It says forty-five. Yeah, it says forty-five special.
Hall is probably about forty-five feet because we, I know we didn't go over that.
And do we need to come up with different heights for mixed use versus residential versus commercial too?
I don't think so, because residential in the downtown district, like no one's going to bu- build a single family home on one of these. I mean, it could.
Okay.
You know, but.
I don't know. I'm just asking, maybe that way we'll, like, you know how we were talking about providing incentives? If somebody's doing mixed use to have a commercial space in the first level, maybe they might need a few more. Feet, right? So because. That might help set some kind of boundaries, but yeah, just one.
Yeah, I see.
Well, then, anybody else? What do you, was the difference between having the incentive? Make it lower and have an incentive to go another five, eight feet or just set a limit?
You guys are on the right road right now.
Excuse me, Mark, we're talking.
I know, you said anyone.
Mark, 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 can you just mute him because we're not ready for. I'm I'm talking. Talking to the planning board members, so. Any opinions, thoughts on that, whether we should keep it as maybe lower and have an incentive to go a little bit higher? But maybe even make that lower than it is now? Or just set a limit and then not have to deal with it? Make him build that limit and that's it.
But Dale, how will we document the part about the incentive in the bylaws? What would we say?
The way it is, the the same way it is now, I think it's in there and it says there are incentives. There's, trying to remember I've.
Uh, yeah, just I can.
Incentives for doing with the special permit, going over the the height. Getting the extra amount. There's there are incentives in there.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and I can read this.
Affordable housing, there's incentives for, there's a lot of stuff in there that is incentive based.
And Dale, do you have any?
I mean, if you if you think forty. Whatever forty it is now, forty-three feet is too high, then maybe we should just lower that a little bit.
Well, I think we might need to find out exactly, you know, what, taking a guess at what town hall is. And if we're thinking forty-five is too high, then maybe it is thirty-eight to forty-two. You know, maybe it's not a big difference, but it to someone trying to get retail and. You know, and two, two layers of housing and, you know, they might need those four feet. It's certainly come up on Pond Street where they wanted those few extra feet, you know, and they had to go back down. So it doesn't have to be a big give. We can be, it can be a small give, you know. Because I think we do want that maximum height set at something that's below town hall. And that's it. That's the bottom line, you know. Not possible to do four stories. We we would have that in the bylaw already. But I think we make it a little bit more restrictive than it is now because we're getting people that are trying to push the boundary.
And then if they come back and say, whoops, we had to go over that a couple of feet, then we're.
Yeah, and and the planning board can only, should only be able to give that that extra. If if there's a a give back, like, what do you, what are you giving for that? What are you paying? You know, you got to pay for it. What what what's the price, you know?
Did you get all that, Pete? Emma?
I did. I did.
Everybody, anybody else disagree or have different numbers? Because. You know, do we say thirty-eight and forty-two?
I think Dale, I think right now we just have to put some numbers on it and come back to it and and like when after we let. You know, Peter, Emma, MACP, like, look at it as, hey, your number is a little off here. I'd recommend tweaking them. Because even I like, I know thirty-five feet, but thirty-eight, forty-two, like, you know, I'm not sure. So. Like discussion, I guess.
I just, I think for, I'm having slow internet, and so I'm not having having tough time jumping around. And I'm, I have the town hall plans, however. My internet's not letting me open them up right now. I think I just have too much, too many things open. However, at the next meeting, I I will have those dimensions. And then I'll also bring in the dimensions that we have for the two most, I would say, the two newest projects in town, which would be. One twenty-eight and then twenty-one Main, and then we can kind of use those as backups. But I I agree, you know, just looking back from what we did in December, we had thirty-eight feet. That's what we were talking about. Reading the bylaws, if we do max it out at forty-five feet. And it's a note, and it's four stories, no greater than the forty-five feet. It's upon a special permit from the planning board. And then it reflects back to the special permit criteria, which is in a different section. And so we don't actually outline what those benefits would be, if it's affordable housing, if it's open space, if it's additional parking. We would have to come to the board, have have to come to those conclusions. Weighing what they are proposing against that special permit criteria within. We do have six points with of within that criteria, I would say. So theoretically, that's how it would be kind of weighed, measured as a project kind of moves through. But. This is the type of discussion I I was hoping for tonight. So I think it's, I think we're in a good spot.
So we'll we'll do our work on that one a little bit, see what other towns have and and see what town hall is. And that should be easy just to lock that in at the next meeting. What about a massing design standards?
And so these kind of come up into play and and we kind of went over these in great detail. And. Um, excuse me.
Again, I think we have some of the images of this, right?
Yeah, we have the pictures here, the images. These are the ones that we want.
These are the images. Can, does everyone see those images?
No.
No.
Okay.
See some lady running on the beach.
Get out of here.
Yeah.
No, that's what I have too. It's like the standard background.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh. I should stop my screen share. Emma, you could have gave me a text about that one?
I have it on my screen too. It's my normal back screen. It's it's just a, it's not a bad thing.
Peter, I thought that was the plan. See you in your desk.
These are the new drawings, correct?
I hope it was a good destination. Yeah, these are the new drawings. That we kind of came up with that that are going to replace those old drawings that we would have within our. Within the, within the diagrams, I would say.
Okay, so just real quick, just to, just to throw this out there. On the Mansard roof one, you keep talking about having a nice curved one. That looks like a square box or just a straight line. I'm going to look at that and say, that's all I have to do.
Well, that's a, that's a good point. If we want to put a detail in.
Just the drawing a little bit so that they kind of, if they're looking at that, they wouldn't just go for the square. Even though a lot of that Mansard housing in Ashland are just straight like that. A lot of the older ones I've noticed.
Uh, yeah, there's a couple of Mansards right around town hall that just have that straight, that straight angle, I would say. But if you if you're looking to add that kind of that curvature, that concave hit, that curve. We can, we can ask for that, Dale, and or put in a detail. Which actually just straight, you know, addresses, you know, what we're looking for.
Yeah.
So I I I think these are good. I think these these are good kind of concepts, fundamental concepts, and they're updates to what we have today. You know, one example that I that I that I would love to see somehow incorporated here as. Trying to lead people towards what we're looking for. Again, I I always go back to. That the the building in Hopkinton where the one-ten grill is. And if you look at that, that structure, it it's a. It's it incorporates a lot of different things. It's super interesting to look at. It's got a lot of different uses in it. I mean, that that building has a nice restaurant, it has a breakfast spot, it has professional spaces. Really, and it's really interesting to look at, and it's all very different New England. Kind of pieces to it. And again, I I understand that this is trying to identify like the baked elements that we're looking for in those styles. But I think an example, if it's possible, to get an example in here that shows kind of a. You know, it's like, it's like twenty-one Main, like, and that first top left drawing is trying to do that a little bit where, you know, you're breaking up the blocks. Like, you're breaking up the 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 straight structure and you you're creating multiple. Come, you know, I I don't know the right term for it, but yeah, and it it's interesting to look at and it incorporates. Multiple aspects. And so anyway, if it'd be possible, you know, to to add one that shows kind of, here's a really great way of putting some of these together. As like indicative of what we would like and what we think people would like. That'd be cool. I don't, I don't know how feasible that is. Sure.
Yeah, I thi- I think, I think also. You know, we show this one of like one-twenty-eight Main. You know, basically with the with the two facades, but we we need to get kind of, but we need to give a a maximum length. Right? We need to say, hey, over eighty feet or whatever it is, you have to break up the facade in a in a significant way. Now, I have, I have some images up of one-ten, you know, the one-ten grill area to just kind of refresh my memory of what like Joe was talking about. And it does that. It's not just like these tiny little bump outs like they're playing with with twelve Pond Street, right? It's a significant move to kind of break up that massing. So you, but but we have to give them a length, you know, I think you can't have longer than this. So, you know, it'd be interesting to measure. Bagel table, you know, and just see what that is. I don't say, I don't, it it could perhaps go longer than that. I think you can. But what is that kind of maximum length, you know, that you can't go longer than this without breaking it up?
Okay, that's a great point.
For the discussion purposes, I'll try to pull up.
I have, I mean, I have a Google Street View of that building in Hopkinton. Is it useful if I just share that for a second?
Joe, if you want to share that, that'd be great. I I think I stopped my screen share. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, you did. It says his host is disabled participant screen sharing. So could you turn it on for me, please?
You're off, okay.
Cool. So. So this is, this is the one-ten grill building. So there's the one-ten grill. We, here you have, you know, Milford Regional Lab and Radiology. There's an urgent care here, and then down here, you've got Golden Stone, which is that used to exist where that Starbucks is. And and the crazy thing is, is if you go around the back of this building, it continues around the sides and the back of it. So like breaking up what's a really big structure, that's what Chris, you know, the way Chris said it. I mean, like, this is a huge building. When you look at it, it doesn't give you that feeling because of the way these different elements are are put together. And let me see if I can go down the street here and get a view. Okay. So there's coming around the end, but in the back here, let me see if I can go down here. Guess it's a little bit more blonde back, but there's an ice cream shop over here. So it's a little bit less creative on the backside here, but. It's still got a lot of different things, it's a lot of different uses and a lot of different things cohabitating in this pretty big building.
Lot of dimension to it.
Yeah. Um, anyway.
There you go.
Yeah. Oh, wait, actually, hold on, let's see. Oh, no. I thought this was going to be in between. Anyway, uh, where am I here? Okay, anyway, you guys get the idea.
Yeah. But the other thing is, Joe, this building is in a space where it's really open. The street that it's coming off of is a wider street, so that's why we're able to appreciate the design. But in Ashland, there's not that many spaces, right? That many open spaces where this kind of building would be. But in Ashland, there's not that many spaces, that I, that many open spaces where this kind of building would be. Able to come up and be appreciated or give that effect, right, so that's the other thing, like. Um, we have to keep Ashland in mind when we think of this design too.
Well, a- and maybe it doesn't have three or four, I mean, that building has a number, it probably has three different elements, so we're four, it's. So totally right, like, yeah, but um, you know, but the concept of one or two, like twenty-one main.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah, again, the twenty-one main is, we can do that because of the space again, and it's got that openness behind it, right, so that's why. Once it goes up and at least on the plan, it looks really, really good because of the way it's designed and the space it's being done in, so.
Alright, so Peter, the, the consultants, are they come, are they coming up with the final? Version of everything or are we doing it, are they insulting and we're doing it, or are they? That we are inputted?
I think we are, so I'm taking notes on all the input, I am going to. Get all the numbers and do this, do the work and communicate with our consultant of, of this conversation. And I will most likely send him the lack of video recording of, of, of this. And then I'm gonna ask them to come back and to present a final mock-up of the bylaws that um. That we can go through and to finalize, to come, come to some conclusions on, I would say, yeah. You know, so all this is, you know, going to be, you know, brought into the mix, I would say.
Uh, and I, I can't remember if he talked about it before, but I noticed on that chart, there's also an FAR designation. And I don't know, um, in the first one, it actually had, it had two comma zero instead of two point zero. And I don't know if we've ever, I assume these are, it's just, it's a very standard number. Um, about that, about that designation, but it would be nice for him to give just a little. Explanation of. Why that number is the right one, I mean, I don't know how many people typically deal with FAR, not, not, you know, there's not a lot of. I didn't even know Ashland did, you know, frankly, or if, if, or if that's new, but.
I, I don't think we have, and it's not within the bylaws, I think. When you're getting to the FAR, I think it's another cal- it's another way to calculate the size and the mass of the building, right? I think the other way, I think some communities like to. Use FAR as their one strategic way to measure the size and shape of the building. However, on, uh, on, in other areas. You can measure FAR with what's going into the building, right, with your setbacks, your height limitations. Those are all going to be calculated, those are all going to calculate what your FAR is. And so it's, I think it's a matter, it's a strategic decision that you make. How do you want to calculate your building, do you want to calculate it? With limitations using FAR, or do you want to calculate it using, this is your setback, this is your height restriction. These are the number of parking spaces you need to require for your parking, I mean, for your building. And that also is a driver of that FAR and.
Right, so then it would be important to know, like, are we taking the FAR off? Or are we doing all these numbers and leaving it on? You know, so it's, it's just a question, like, I'm not sure, we haven't, obviously haven't talked about it. It's a difficult number sometimes to get your head around, like, what, what that means. So um, I just don't want it to let it just, oh, we'll just pretend we don't see the FAR there and pretend it's okay. Um, so we should understand what it means, I guess.
Okay, I'll talk to Chris about that and I can get a, kind of, kind of get a definition and uh. He can provide some feedback.
Yeah, so like, like, like you were saying, like, if we, if we have all these setbacks, we have a height limitation and we have a story limitation. Then do we need the FAR? So it's, it's a question, I'm not sure what the answer is, so. Construction, they have the FAR there because um, you know, people try to sneak in a tall basement. Um, and not have it count toward the FAR. Um, and that makes the building taller.
I've seen some, I have a guy that, I know a guy who lives in East Boston, he's, he owns a condo there. And he's, there's all kinds of crazy development going on around him, and he's shared with me some of the presentations for the planning board that. He's gone to and some of the FARs like there are like bananas, like the numbers are crazy. And it, you know, it totally, in tho- in that environment, it like jumps off the page, what you're trying to do here, which is. Overloading a site, right? But I agree with you, like. You know, if we deal with the setback and all the pieces that push it into the FAR, like, maybe we don't need it. And yeah, we can, anyway, just, like, I do think it's a really useful tool in some settings, but maybe if we're managing it another way, we don't need it.
Yeah, I'll talk to Chris about it and we'll get back and, and, and we'll kind of come, you know, we'll kind of bring it back up to the surface, I would say. But uh, but yeah, no, I've dealt with it, I've dealt with it different ways. It's just, it's a matter of, you know, how do you want to deal with the situation, I personally think at this point. I think dealing with the setbacks and the height restrictions and the parking is the way to go to kind of drive that FAR for my state, you know.
Some, sometimes it's also a matter of saying, and I, I don't know how this comes up, that the first floor of a building. I mean, you can say it has to be accessible, but like, the, the first floor of a building has to be within. Fourteen inches of grade or of the sidewalk level, you know what I mean? Because. You know, that's how it starts to be manipulated, like, I'll get a basement under there that doesn't count in the number of stories. So I, I'm just not sure how it plays in.
Yeah, and, and you know what, I don't know if there's any situations here that. People are trying to get access and use that basement floor for an apartment and or for a business. Um, but I, I, I understand what you're saying, Trish. Because you're trying to squeeze something down, you're trying to squeeze another level, you're trying to bury the first level into the ground.
Yeah, or the, the first level pops up to get light in but doesn't count, you know? I mean, that's how the game is played residentially, you know, you, you get it up high, but you don't, you don't have to count it because it's right at the limit. I, I'm not sure about in commercial construction if it's even an issue, because a lot of times parking's underground and that's great, that's fine. So we just have this, that number in there and we haven't talked about it, so I just. You know, developers are gonna look at it, so, so should we, so.
Um, okay.
And building details?
Yeah, and the building details, I'll kind of keep spinning down, is uh, actually. We do uh. I just have to share my screen again, excuse me. And so these are, obviously, we have, we define roofs. And which were not designed, defined before within the current bylaws. Um, and we say, obviously, we, we're trying to get away from that flat roof. Um, and, and so we suggest four, four different types of roof, the hip, the Mansard, the side gable, the front gable. I think uh Dale, I think you brought up, if we want to add a Mansard detail with that hip. I think this is a good area to kind of add that or include that detail. And then also we talked about massing. And then we also get into defining dormers. And elements that we would like to see, the shed dormer, the dormer, the cross gable and the bay window. And I think those are the big elements that we do, we include into the bylaw. Uh, one element that we also do touch upon is the facades and the glazing. That the glade that the, for the first floor of the building, she'll have a mi- uh. A minimum of sixty percent, I'm sorry.
Sixty.
So we're saying there's a minimum of sixty percent for glazing on the front of buildings. I think one question we can ask M A T C, is that appropriate, or does the board want to go to an, to a, to an additional level? You know, do we want to go to seventy, do we want to go to seventy-five? Um, I, I don't know if I have the right answer tonight on that, however, sixty was always the number that was kind of placed. Um, as a placeholder within, as we develop these changes.
Just want to comment too about like roof types, and I, I totally understand the danger in some of these. But it's why this stuff is comp- it's complicated, I mean, even in the example Joe just showed about um the Hopkinton building. Parts of that building have flat, has flat roofs and we all just looked at it and thought it looked good. Um, you know, if you go to older downtowns, almost anywhere and, and, and little, the old section of downtowns, there are. You, you know, two and three-story buildings with parapet walls and. You know, what would appear to be a flat roof, it's probably sloped back there, you know, that you can't really see, but what appears to be a flat roof. So, I mean, can it be done really terribly? Absolutely it can. But it's also very traditional and very small-townish, you know, um. So how to regulate that, I, I am not sure, you know, if it um. I, I'm not sure, but I think just putting a big X through flat roof, flat roof bad, that is not history. That is not what we see when we drive through all these little cute little towns, we see flat, we see what appear to be flat roofs, what's happening behind, we don't know. So.
Got that one down.
I guess the flat roof also kind of plays a small role when it comes to commercial buildings to a certain extent, I guess. Having sloped roofs are great for residential buildings, but do you want all buildings in Ashland hundred percent to look? Very, very similar with one being. From gable, one being side gable and then not have that kind of the mix, especially when we're looking at downtown where we do want that. Retail corridor happening, um, do we want to kind of say no to flat roof? I'm not sure whether that's the right way for a commercial, at least, applications.
Okay. Does anybody else, you know, I, I agree, you know, and I'm thinking, I'm going through my head of the downtowns and where I grew up and. I think most of the buildings, I think Trish, you, you nailed it, have some sort of a flat roof. Um, with some sort of a, a, a front facade that looks almost like, you know, that has some detail or elements of detail.
Think about um, think about Nick's Pizza right next to town hall. Like that structure, it, it sits in, that flat roof structure sits in front of an old white house that used to. Be setback from the road and now it's got, like, I'm pretty sure that's flat roof, isn't it?
I look at it every day.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
And there's some, a couple other buildings too and, and down in there, there, there's a big brick building. By the library, right in front of the library.
Yeah, you have the um.
Flat.
The ma- yeah, the Mason Hall is, is, is a flat, I believe, like.
Is the liquor store a flat roof? No, the liquor store at the corner, that's not a flat. It's a flat roof, like, I remember seeing it this morning, so that's why.
Yep. Sunny side's a flat roof.
There we go. Good call, good call out, Trish.
Um, yeah, I mean. I was trying to look for a, you know, a good example. I could, I could show one town, um, if I can, if I can screen share a minute here.
And I don't know. Have to put comment, comment in there, flat roofs need to have certain things.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't, this isn't, uh, what are you guys seeing?
Flat roofs?
It's not entirely applicable, this is Galena, Illinois, it's not far from where I grew up, so it's not even New England.
And they're all eight feet from the, from the road.
Yeah, so this, this town obviously has become very, um, you know. Tourists and restaurants and gift shops and stuff. And it's much more dense actually than, than Ashland probably will ever become, but um, but this is what I'm saying, like, this kind of character. That flat roofs aren't. They're not modern and they're not bad, you know?
They, like you said, they have all those details up there, those. Those nice details that make it look interesting rather than just a square.
Yeah, and some of those, like, if you, I don't know if you can, you can see my cursor on the example that Joe just showed. One of the reasons why the flat roof, you look, if you look at one of the buildings on, next to one-ten grill. Is that it was, it did incorporate.
Yeah.
This heavy cornice.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that's what makes.
Dresses it up, right?
Dresses it up, right? You know, how do, how do you, I'm interested in if, if M, whatever. They, if they have diagrams of these other things, I wonder if they have a diagram of this, like, if you're doing a flat roof, you're gonna have to do something like this, you. You know, you're gonna have to.
If we put an example that looks like this in there, that's what they'll see and.
Right, I mean, even in Boston, Boston triple deckers, you know, they all have flat roofs. And maybe not all of them, but it's a typical type, but they typically also have something at the top, that tech, that cornice. Peace, anyway, I'll stop my share, I'm just.
I wonder if the materiality also kind of plays in, like, if you notice, all of them are brick buildings, so the detailing of how the cornice details and the window. Trims are, it starts to add to that architectural, this one, so maybe we have that as an addition to saying, okay. You're gonna have flat roof, it's not no, but these are things that probably will play into that facade.
And, and, and like, if we go back to, if we think about eighty-five West Union and the discussion on that building, right? And we're like, well, we're, like, give us some of the detail, what are the details that go with it? You have it in, again, eighty-five is in downtown, but presuming you're in downtown and you get into these conversations where. You know, they're not, they're not getting it, but look, these are some examples of way to dress it up. And, and this is a way you could do a flat roof, but really give a nice looking product that, that makes downtown look great. Then you got it right in, you can point to it, here you go, here's six things, look at it.
Well, and they can, they, when they're designing it, they can look at it and say, we want a flat roof and look at this, oh, it's fancy, so. Let's build it like that, that's what they're looking for, yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, especially if you have one of these long facades that now you have to start breaking up, which is what the one-ten grill was doing. Parts of it went flat because they're kind of in between two higher parts and it's really hard. To do that, it's really, you can't put just any old, you're gonna, you're gonna have snow piling up, you're gonna have water. Pro- problems in there, so the flat roof in between is one of the rea- as you're breaking up your facade, the flat roof is one of the ways. It's a tool to achieve these other goals, but a- as we were saying, it has. I think it all has to have more regulations on it, there's window casings, you know, there's. There's molding details, there's cornices, you know, things that.
It's amazing, when you look at the old buildings, they did all that detail, a lot of detail. And now a lot of the new ones, they just put a blank space to put a sign. And it's not the same, you know, like, I look at, admire all these old buildings and they got brickwork around the buildings, uh, windows. And the roofs and in between and there's like layers of, of it's really, really nice.
Well, a lot of it's because they found pretty ways to do things that they had to do in those times and now we just use our modern technology and just kind of.
Yeah.
Still stand up, it just doesn't, there's no reason to come up with a way to make it look pretty.
And, and, and the one thing I'll throw on here, and this is like. Like, there's a lot of differing opinions about downtown, there's a lot of different cuts and takes and slants on this, depending on who you talk to. And, right, and so like, one of the things I can say is, is, you know. If, if, if you're bucketing opinions into buckets, you know, the, there's people who, who, who have, who have been less pleased about. The way some things have gone downtown in the design, but they actually have pointed to this building in Hopkinton. Right, and said, well, like that, like, like that's what we want, like that, now that's interesting, you know, or that's got the feel and. So I, again, I, it's um, it's as you lay out, Trish, it's, it's a, it's a complex, interesting to look at building. And it can have flat roofs and these other things to it, but it still gives you a product that really looks great and it's like, awesome, cool, I like looking at that.
I think we should suggest that they add that something if they can, like the. Drawing of the sample of a flat roof that looks nice like that.
Yeah, properly det- I'm sure that, I'm sure they must have one, like, just from another town or something, it doesn't have to be something that's already located in Ashland.
And something that we, we think is acceptable, because if they're just kind of looking at that for an example, they might design it that way. And if we, we add some detail to the. Then they can.
Yeah, it's like having the curb on the Mansard roof, you know, I mean, traditionally. You know, I mean, traditionally, that curve I think is usually there. It's not cheap.
But if if we don't put it in a drawing, they're gonna go like, well, this is what you said you liked straight, so.
That's right, we need the diagram, it can be simple, but we need it to look nice.
There's an old, there's an older house right across from the um, telecom building. And it's a mansard and it's got the s- the s- the witch's cap, it's got the slope and it's an old slate roof and it's gorgeous. And the house needs a little love, but it's like, there you go, that that's it, that's a mansard and it looks great, you know, to see it and yeah. It's in the details.
Alright, so. Where the devil hides?
Anything else we missed in the uh, building details, anybody? Okay, uses.
And so the, yeah, uses.
Where are we at on the uses?
So the uses, you know, I think from from you know, since the time I've been here, I haven't heard too many complaints about the uses within the downtown district, right? So and and we never really talked about the uses per se, right? And what is missing, what's miss, what is, what is missing, what's not allowed? So the question is, you know, and I would just kind of post this to everybody is is there anything that we think we're missing and or doesn't work within the zone, what, within the table of uses that are currently listed today? Um, you know, we do talk about retail stores, we talked about restaurants, you know, we talked about no drive-throughs, no drive-up windows. You know, every, you know, Dale, I think, and Dale and Joe, and you know, I think you two may have been part of the board when the Needham Bank was permitted, right? That was also a a a recent project within the town using this districting, right? So my question is, is, has, has have, has anybody had feedback regarding the uses and what does and doesn't work currently within the Bible?
I haven't had any like, direct feedback, but I guess my question is, you know, are there um you know, could someone come and and put a you know, using the underlying zoning or like, and put a storage facility, is that just, that's just not possible in any of the locations we're talking about?
Well, industrial, that one, there's over on Pleasant Street, wasn't there an industrial section there? So I think that's.
Far down, is that right?
We changed that to uh, industrial only, right?
Industrial only, yeah.
Storage things, yes, we, after that one went up on.
Well, eh eh, we, so we, we, we went through after, right, after eighty-five West Union, we did go through and strike storage in a number of places. I, to be honest with you, I don't know if we did anything unpleasant, I think we focused on 135, the marathon route and a couple of parcels over there, I'm not sure we touched Pleasant.
It was industrial.
No, but again, it.
So they're industrial on Pleasant.
And that's the underlying zoning.
But we didn't strike, right, but we didn't strike, we didn't strike storage from industrial everywhere, we struck it from specific uses in other zone, right? Like, we didn't do a blanket industrial hit on storage. We, it was a targeted thing saying it was a little bit more targeted and discreet, my, that's my recollection, Peter, you see, I think you agree, you're saying.
Yeah, no, we, we took it out of uh, Commercial Highway.
Yeah.
Yep, and and we also took out the landscaping, the contracting businesses out of Commercial Highway. And that was all, that was done at the the town meeting in two thousand, excuse my, my memory. I believe that was in the sw- the fall of nineteen. If I, if I, correct me if I'm wrong. But no, we did not touch the industrial district and and Trish, to your point, uh, the underlying zoning on Pleasant Street running down to the train station, which I would call on the south side and or the I believe the uh the, the, the even side of the street, because I believe that was, just because I'm just running addresses in my mind. That underlying zoning is industrial. And so someone could come in and theoretically use the underlying zoning as a tool to permit something of that nature.
So here's, this was the, this was the the report, the twelve eight report from Maypeck, right? And so this area here hashed is ADDA with an underlying zoning of industrial.
Correct.
So again, that means that you can do anything ranging from industrial all the way up through ADDA. As long as the base of industrials there, anything in industrial can fly there in in theory from a zoning.
Correct, yeah, by right.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just, I'm just calling it out, that's the doubt, that when you get into this overlay this is, I mean, it it does become complex here, right?
Correct.
So we're on the, can you point out again, Joe, that the industrial area under, that's under the zoning?
Can you see my cursor? Hold on, let me annotate, I can, hold on, let me do this. So I believe this, this piece here, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong. This whole parcel has industrial based zoning, does it not?
Correct, and also, Joe, if you take a look at this, we all see ten to fifty Main Street, that underlying zoning is industrial. And then also at the top of McGonko Road, in between McGonko and the train tracks is also don- zoned industrial.
This, just that, or is, does it extend down here, Peter?
Nope, just that, right there, Joe, so, so those, those three parcels and or those three elements that Joe just circled, they have an underlying zoning of industrial.
So you could buy a parcel, you could build a three-story, three-family house, or you could use it for industrial.
Correct.
So, yeah, so I guess my biggest concern right now is not the little things with the zoning, I think the setbacks and things will help that and it's just too complicated, but you know, just imagining those storage facilities next to the school, like would we want a storage facility plopped anywhere in this zone? You know, now, yeah, maybe it might blend right in now, you know, but as we look to the future of what we want Ashland to be, you know, hooking the train station at one end and sites that are very close to downtown and another end, sites that are right in the middle of downtown, you know. So I I guess I would be saying is like, how do we take those three out of industrial? For the future, right, but obviously what's there is there, but and that would be preventing, to me, maybe preventing something that we just don't want to happen by right, you know?
Or or is, or is it shifting, or is it just changing the table of uses for that?
Maybe make it industrial B or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, you know, um, it would probably depend on what is categorized as industrial, like my building, you know, um, with uh, United Home Experts, is that industrial? Like, it's mostly, but it is, is the building.
Uses inside.
Yeah, is it an industrial use?
I think, I think.
More commercial, I think.
Yeah, they don't make anything there, they're not.
Buddy, go easy, buddy.
Correct, it don't make anything like a, like a true manufacturer, however, yes.
Right, there's some, there's some probably, the warehouse stor- storage space in there, I mean, the countertop place, Divine Stonework does make countertops there. There is in that building, there is a cabinet shop, they actually make cabinets there. But I, it's hard, like, that's one definition initiative maybe of industrial and then there seems like a much more heavy duty image of industrial.
Like the building up on McGonko Road, the, the name of that plant up there, chemical plant?
Yeah.
Ny- a niacal.
Niacal, right, so niacal is something that you would say is what most people would think of as traditional industrial, right? But again, like this is where I'd say like, Peter, if you have the table, if you have the use table for industrial, like, let me stop sharing and let's look at what industrial means in the context of our zoning, because to the point it's all about what the uses are, I mean, under industrial, right?
Yeah, because I think it's totally fine to have a cabinet shop that's actually making kitchen cabinets, that, along that route, you know, that, that seems great, but having you know, I'm not even sure, you know, somebody that's manufacturing farm equipment, you know, might not be the right location for that, or um, a quarry, you know? If there was suddenly a lot of limestone right there, you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull, I'm gonna try to get to uh, the Ashland table of uses, yeah. And and not to complicate this conversation, but in many towns, you have a light industrial and then you have an industrial zone.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's like, like, the building you're in is like, to me, a light industrial, right?
Correct, that's how Trish's built.
My, my building, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, niacal would not, would probably not be a light industrial, right? Um.
Can I share my screen real quick?
Yeah, I stopped sharing, so you should really grab it.
I mean, the light industrial, I think, you know, I mean, our building maybe is, I I don't know if it's just a a really good example because people actually work and things are actually made there in Ashland. But it's not a um, dirty industry, you know what I mean?
So just under the industrial uses, you have earth removal, light manufacturing. Um, and obviously I is all the way over here on the far right-hand side.
So I, so I is industrial and this is a defined induc- these are the defined industrial uses.
Correct.
Light manufacturing. Mini storages here.
Correct.
So anywhere there's an industrial based zone, you have a yes for mini storage warehouse facility.
Correct.
Like versus some of those, so all of these are listed in like publishing and printing, computer software development, that's under industrial?
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's a huge, when you, when you put that up against junkyard and those are in the same category, that's like cra- crazy, right?
Many would argue, I mean, many would say that, yes, I think you could find a lot of people that would uh that would agree with you on that one, Trish.
What does BA stand for here?
Board of Appeals, and so they would have to obtain a board of, a zoning board of appeals special permit. So.
So I'm not sure, but I I have no idea what the easiest route is to get to where we want to go with this. But that's my main concern, I feel good about the things we've just been talking about with setbacks and building heights and things. Um, but this is my concern kind of for use, if it's an underlying industrial, how do we keep someone from putting an automobile salvage or graveyard there by right, you know?
And and really, Trish, the answer is that we need to, you know, look at the uses, we could create and they, we could create a light industrial district. We could really kind of move these kind of uses around and try to do some, you know, and do some research and do some legwork to say, okay, what works, what doesn't work. If we are going to, you know, if we're gonna keep the overlay district overlay and keep the industrial industrial, maybe it makes sense is to say, okay, we're gonna rezone this area to light industrial. And then these are uses that are allowed by right, and then you have an industrial, right? And I think Joe, that's what Joe mentioned, right, your traditional industrial uses, right, your you know, your niacals, your, 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 you know, tire facilities, you know, you name it. I think those are your more traditional industrial uses, your quarrying, right? And so I think that's, that's, that's the way to do that and and obviously that takes a lot of it takes a, it's, it's a big lift, right, because you have to do some research, it's some, some sorting through your bylaws and and I don't know when the last time the the board indoor the town did this type of review of the uses within the industrial district. I'm assuming it's been some time and it's probably well overdue. But that's how you would start to kind of unpack the conversation.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm okay with it being like not perfect at the beginning, I don't, I think, you know, I think it'd be easy to take um, the kind of uh, low hanging fruit on these industrial uses, put them in a a light industrial category and then say, okay, the district is actually light industrial, not industrial. And later, if we need to say, hmm, you know, really, assembly and packing is just fine, you know, there. You know, you could always put it, you know, back in the other category.
And also, we could also check other towns and stuff that have light and industrial and see what, how they describe it.
Yeah.
That's working for them, yeah.
That's right, and tweak it if we need to.
And, yeah, in 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 my eyes, this is a whole nother, this is another project, right, that comes up out of the downtown zoning, right? And so I think that's what, I'm happy, I think we should continue down that road. But um, but but I think, yes, it's a whole, it's a, it's a project that we should do and 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 take on, I would say.
I just, I just didn't know if the underlying zoning, you know, that we talked about making, whatever the underlying zoning, like what did that include? Is that just all restaurants and offices that you know, or, or is it including some you know, some of these other things that were, that are actually quite
I mean, if you.
Quite good facilities to have in Ashland, you know?
If you think about it, right? Like, underlying zoning is a reflection of the history of the existing parcel, right? So if you think about a base underlying zoning for that Pleasant Street corridor we just highlighted, it's industrial. And that's historically what it's been, it was shoe factories, it was mills, it was industrial. And the ADDA that, that's overlaid is kind of reflective of where people, where the town is trying to move that district. So it's like, the underlying zoning is history, the overlay is in an attempt or an effort to shift or migrate what's on those parcels towards what the town or the the vision is for, for, for that por- portion of town. And so it's like, I don't know, it's just an observation, I guess, but that, that, that's kind of what it, that's what it feels like to me.
I guess I'm just wondering maybe if it's um and I'd have to look at those uses again in there, if it's like kind of way far in the future, right, like we're really gonna fill this entire downt- the entire downtown with commercial offices and restaurants and yoga studios and whatever, you know, art, art, artist lofts and, you know, and this type of thing. You, you know, that seems to me a really long-term vision. And in the meantime, someone can come up and put a junkyard in there by right. So, um yes, I just don't see it changing that quickly and it's kind of discounting, I think, a lot of really maybe wonderful things that could be there. You know, that provide jobs, the local jobs and local businesses and.
Right now, junkyard and salvaging is not allowed. According to this, right?
Oh, is it off the, I can't see the end of the chart online.
It's an N, so industrials is no, it's not allowed.
A lot of, but there is a lot of other stuff in there. Contractors, landscaping. I mean, some of those landscaping places can end up looking like a junkyard.
Yeah.
Peter, what's BA mean, by approval?
Nope, it's Board of Appeals, and so that would have to go, that use such as a where.
Zoning Board of Appeals?
Correct, they would have to get a, a Board of Appeals special permit.
Why isn't that the planning board?
It's a zoning, it's a zoning issue.
It's a zo- it was, it's a zoning matter and it's.
Okay, but what it, but but what it does mean is that, wh- what, what's a land transportation terminal, that's a train station?
Bus station.
Bus stop.
Bus stop.
Yeah, okay.
So I would have to pull, what? Joe, that's a good point, why are they planning board special permits with the, with the um, Board of Appeals special permit? It all comes down to really, I I would say the last time that the town focused.
Yeah.
History, it's all about history.
Yep, decisions that were made in the past, yep.
Yep, it's all decisions that were made in the past, a hundred percent.
So earth, earth removal is an allowed use in an industrial zone in Ashland, which means you can put a sand pit on Pleasant. Punch line.
If there's any sand.
Of course, right, I mean, it's a rhetorical, right, it's a rhetorical. Of course, right? I mean, it's a rhetorical, right, it's a rhetorical kind of thing, but.
I had to take it.
Yeah, yeah, so, or, or, so like Trish said, oh, there's some great granite here, let's go, here we go, you know? So.
Yeah.
It, it, it feels like if, if, if we're gonna say no to a junkyard or salvage yard, like earth removal for. You know, Pleasant Street feels, you know, anyway. I hear your point that this is a big lift and, you know, you. Trying to move forward, I just, um. I agree with Trish, I think there's some short, there's some relatively straightforward things here that I think we could do as part of this that. Would protect what we're trying to do in our downtown, what we're calling the downtown, so. I think it's with that.
Okay.
So you're gonna get with the consultants and update. All our.
Yeah, I can go.
They're gonna have him back. To present the final package?
Uh, yeah, I'll have him back and, and I'll talk to him and I'll kind of talk it to him about this discussion. I can send him the tape of the meeting and, um, and hopefully he'll be back in front and he can present us with a kind of a, a final version. Uh, that we can move forward with, and then, you know, we can, we can start having a conversation about industrial uses. And if there's anything, you know, we do have time, you know, regarding a quick, you know, not a quick, but a, a. If there's a proposal by the planning board like to make for any of the uses right now in industrial district. Even just making them a Board of Appeals special permit. Um, I think, you know, that, that's also an option that we have some, you know, we, but that would have to happen fairly quickly, I would say, so. If, uh, if any of the board members want to reach out to me to bring it up at the next meeting, please do. Um, and then we can kind of go from there, but. Can Dale, do you, do, I feel like we've kind of talked about this, do you want to move on? Do you wanna?
Yes, I just had one more question. What's the timeframe to get this on for me? Like, like, when's the outside the last chance we have? To get the consultant and nail down all the details and then have public hearings and?
I think we have about two more, we have two more planning board meetings, I would say, before we have to make a, we have to hold a public hearing.
Because I was one, I was thinking if, uh, rather than have him come at the next planning board meeting, maybe. I guess he could, but if he has any issues, if he's watching this, and he, and they have any issue. To contact you, any concerns, whatever, we could discuss that at the next meeting, and then they could come at the. Following meeting and just finish everything.
Yeah, I could, I can, I can talk to him and see what kind of works best for him, and then I can kind of go back in between, so.
And if he, and if he's, you've got it all figured out, then, then we can have it at the next meeting. Okay, he'd be done with it.
Can I just, um, just, just one last kind of color commentary, uh, uh, overall on this, on what we're trying to talk about? Can I just call one thing out to the board just to think about as we're, we're looking at maps and thinking about all this stuff?
Yeah, go, Joe.
Um, so. So coming back to this map, so I just want to highlight one thing, I'm gonna zoom back in here, okay, so. Just to, just to, just to put this out there, to, to, to highlight to the board, so the CPC in the last town meeting went through. Hey, guys, guys. Went through and we, the town is, the CPC is, has invested, has granted, and the town voted to grant funds to create this trolley book. Trolley Brook Trail. And so I'm gonna get this a little bit wrong, but this, this trolley, this trail is gonna run along this old. Trolley bed that used to actually have a trolley that used to take people to work in Hopkinton. But it's gonna, it's gonna start out somewhere down here on McGonco Road, it's gonna travel down along this body of water. It's gonna come up here and it's gonna connect to the MBTA Road somewhere over here. And so a lot of the thought and the funding for, for this was that, look, this creates a nice connection to the middle school. By the way, the YMCA is going somewhere in over here, right? And it creates a connection to, to, to a middle school, it connects a connection to this train, and, and it connects downtown. And Stone Park right here to the downtown. And so I just, I just would highlight, like, as we're talking and thinking about this, and as we just kind of highlighted that this is, you know, this. In theory, an industrial parcel, right? I'm just kind of like, I just want, I just want to highlight to the board as we're thinking about this, and as we're thinking about trying to get to this June meeting is like, is there anything that we want to do or think about? Which. Could help in connecting. This trail and the concept of what's trying to happen here, but the, the whole idea here is, is, you know, some, that. You know, a kid got, getting out of middle school could use this trail, get to downtown, go to the library, you know? And in general, people can just, this connects downtown to other parts of town, so. Um, and ultimately, the goal for this trail and the system is this part of this Upper Charles Trail. You know, a concept that, so this trail would continue and have other connection points. This is the first segment of this, up, you know. Upper Charles Trail, this is the first segment in Ashland that's getting put into play. And so, anyway.
I think as soon as they have their proposal or their drawings ready, they have a, um. Plan for that property already, so we'll be dealing with that as soon as they come in, correct, Pete?
Correct.
And they already have.
Who are you referring to, Dale? Sorry, who are you referring to?
Road that you, McGonco Road down there, that industrial property that you circled?
Yeah.
That's, that's the zero McGonco Road that's coming in, that was already approved once, and their permit ran out, and they want to put, um.
I think this is zero McGonco right here.
No, it's not, Joe, it's the, it's what Dale was pointing to.
Go one, and they want to put the, the garages and the commercial.
Okay.
Industrial.
Yeah.
There, so that, they're presenting that, that's what they're presenting, so, that's the time to address, I mean, if there's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm talking, you know, sidewalks and, 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 you know, street crossings and like, how do we? I get it, it's industrial, it's been industrial, like, that, that's gonna go forward, but, you know, how do we?
Good to, good to think about what you're talking about with that trail there, like you said, the crosswalks, the sidewalks, the flow of everything. Traffic in and out, is it gonna be right at the end of the trail, and it's gonna be cars coming in and out and all that? So it's good to know and remember that when they come in.
Yeah.
Bring that up, make sure we bring that up, and if we can get a more detailed map of that, maybe.
Yeah, I, I can.
Exactly where their, if their trucks are turned in and out, and they're swinging out right over the trail crossing or anything like that, it might be good. That's good to know when they come in.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get my hands on the final stuff that was presented from the consultants on that end, and. We can have that for the discussion, so I ju- just want to put that on people's radar as we're looking at this, so, thank for indulging me.
Okay.
All right.
So I think we need to move on to the. Discussion of possible zoning bylaw amendments, including the. Covered porch bylaw. Start with that one, did everybody read that? Write, uh, written up version? I like that it's, it's simple, this is not for every complicated. Porch you could possibly build, it's just if you're gonna build a straightforward, simple porch, then you can get the relief of not having to go through. An extra process. So.
Is it?
You have that on there?
Were you reading my edited version, my, um, revised version?
I think so. Do we have, when we put that up?
Emma sent it, yeah.
Emma, can you put that up? Um, and I apologize, I just have to move my locations, uh, my location in my house, so I'm gonna shut my camera off for a few minutes. But continue on.
I think it, it, it covered what we wanted to cover, in my opinion. Um, without addressing, I mean, we don't want to get too complicated and, and, and so any kind of tight porch you ever wanted to build, you could do. But this is just for basic, make it easier to put a basic porch on the front of your house, so I like it.
I think the only thing that I, um, realized afterwards that I would add. Is that in point one, where it says open handrails and guardrails shall be allowed. I think that should also, you know, up to a height of thirty eight inches. Which would be the highest range of.
Or you could put, yeah, or you could put standard.
Well, up, up to a height of thirty eight inches is a maximum, um, recommended for ADA.
Yeah.
So, you know, just keep somebody from building a forty eight inch, who knows what they're gonna build?
Putting rails instead of a screened in, they just put a bunch of rails up.
Exactly, exactly, so.
Did everybody else read through it? Any, any other comments?
Call it all, what we discussed. Um, Trish, is thirty eight inches cord or is it higher?
I'm sorry, can?
Is it thirty eight inches cord or is it higher? With a guardrail?
Thirty eight inches is a maximum for ADA.
Okay.
So it is higher than a typical handrail, but it allows an ADA handrail if that's more comfortable for people there.
Okay.
So typical would probably be more between, usually it's listed between like thirty four and thirty eight is the, is the range.
I think it's, it covers everything. So then the next step would be to have a public hearing on this? Or we have to, we have to file it and then have a public?
Yes, um, I don't know if Peter's here yet, but, uh, we can have it ready for the public, for a public hearing. Uh, for the first, uh, meeting in April, April eighth. Uh, that will mean that it will happen before the, it should happen before the warrant closes, uh, and then we'll get it on the warrant. Uh, and we should be good to go for town meeting, uh, if the committee's happy with this, we'll also run it by, uh, town council before the public hearing.
And Emma, the one that was attached to the email doesn't have the thirty eight inches on it.
No, we just added that.
Yeah, I just. I just typed that in, so if everyone's happy with that, this will be the working document.
Yes. And if the town council or anyone along the line needs to make any changes, tweaks, we can, that'll be done, right? Okay. Um, so then we have also design review trigger correction, what's?
Okay, so this one is gonna look super familiar to a lot of you guys, because we've had two public hearings on it so far. But we've not gotten it to town meeting, uh, because of, you know, COVID and all that. Uh, give me two seconds to bring it up, I'll give. The background. There we go. Okay, so this is. Uh, really a correction. Uh. There is a trigger in design review that refers to. A section of the bylaw that is in no way a trigger, uh, so before this change, it refers to nine point four point seven. Which is, um, a section that talks about architectural standards. But it is, it can't be, it is a trigger, hence upon review of. Uh, the bylaw and also past cases. Um, it seems that this should be referring to nine point four point one point seven, which is the six parking lot trigger. Six parking space trigger, sorry, for the site plan review bylaw, uh, so we're just seeking, this is really just a correction. Uh, to make the bylaw align with what's really in practice right now. So nothing's changed since the last time we've discussed this, um. We're hoping to get it on the warrant.
Process is the same as the other one, well?
Yep, uh, but we're ahead, because this one's already been reviewed by town council, so, uh, we will advertise this for a public hearing, again. Shooting for the first, uh, meeting in April, and that way, any changes from the public hearing can happen before the final language gets on the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, section nine point six point three. Is saying that these, these are the things that need to go to the design review committee. One is downtown and Pleasant Street, two is the one thirty five corridor, three is the one twenty six corridor. And four, which is this. Is anything as per this section, which basically is anything requiring more than six parking spaces? So no matter where it is throughout Ashland, if it needs more than six spaces, that means it's kind of the big building. And so it needs to go for design review. Um. Yeah, I had, I had it all circled and marked in my, in my manual, I'm like, oh, yeah, we did do this before.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll get that on those two on that. We can get the process going, Pete's back. Got a new background. Alright, so next is gonna be review and approval of minutes from February eleven. Does everybody have those?
Yes.
Take a second to review. While you're reviewing that, I had, had an idea, I, I'll get everybody's input on this. Like the other boards do, is they. Read the minutes ahead of time. Any change, any corrections that they find, they would give to Emma ahead of the meeting, and they just approve all the minutes and a. Unanimous consent or whatever the, they just approve the minutes without having to go through them.
But sometimes we, sometimes we.
Discuss.
We talk about it and kind of realign what we thought was said.
Yeah, that's what I kind of figured.
Because otherwise I could make a change and said that, you know, we could just make stuff up about you, Dale, and put it in the minutes, and then Emma will just, you know?
That's fine, I need the publicity.
Yeah.
I think it's a combo thing too, because, you know, I, I went through two, and I, a lot of the little things are just. It's, it's just little things that Emma could easily go through ahead of time and take care of instead of me going through line by line.
I mean, you could do that, you can always do that, go, like, if there's corrections and stuff, if you read it ahead of time. I think the, the thing would be if we can try to read them ahead of time.
Yeah, no, I.
I know, there's, there's sometimes, there's just not time to do it, but.
But this, this is the best time to read them right now.
Where everybody can just look at us, did I lose my audio?
I'm just, I'm just playing.
I know. Is everybody ready with the minutes from?
Okay, I'll start, Emma, um, line ten, I think you need to take the S off of cell phones, cell phones radiation. Um. See. I think in line seventeen. Ms. Dusset, I don't remember who was there originally, I changed it to Ms. Dusset, explained the effect cell towers have. On adjacent residential areas, including. Property value degradation, otherwise it didn't, I couldn't quite get it to make sense, so I'm not sure if the meaning is still right. But something about that sentence was unclear.
Is it supposed to read that the effect the cell towers had on, I think it's missing a couple of.
Yeah, effect cell towers have on adjacent residential.
Yeah, had, I think it's missing a had, yeah, had on Justin.
And then I put in including property value degradation. Now I'm jumping down to thirty eight, does anyone have anything in between? It's about the front porch by law, thirty eight. To prevent a front porch addition from being built right up to the street. Like, I didn't get that because they can't do that now because of the setback.
In a percent.
So I'm just not sure what we were saying there.
I think it should be allowed. I think it should be allowed. So they would have to seek a variance if they want to build a porch in the front yard setback.
Yeah, there's just something about the phrasing that isn't, is confusing. I'm not even sure we, I mean, maybe it's important, but the, the example. Uh, Mr. Magic added as an example. I'm not sure we need the example in there just because I find it confusing. But I could be overruled on that.
Anything else, anybody?
Um, line forty-three, I added as opposed to a zoning variance as long as all the given conditions were met.
So, these are the two eleven minutes, right, that we're just looking through, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
At the last meeting, we went to town on a set of minutes. And there was a bunch of stuff that we said, where usually we just make changes and then you agree to make the changes and then we approve them. But there's a set that we went, we looked at that we said, we, we want to see these revisions before we actually approve them. Um, is, these are not, this is not those minutes, correct?
I don't, yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, these are not those minutes.
Okay, so we don't have those yet. Those would be at next meeting probably, right?
Yes.
Got it. That was the twelve, I think it was the twelve Pond Street discussion. That's right, yeah. Thank you.
The last thing I have on these is line sixty-five. Uh, I spell my name T R I C I A. Pronounce the same, spell different.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes from February eleventh with the changes?
So moved.
Second that.
Home favor?
Trisha Kendall, I.
Lakshmi Krishnan, I. Epa Venkatai.
Joe Rubert, Tony, I.
Dale Buchanan, I, passes five zero zero. Okay, administrative matters, future meetings, public hearings. We talked about some of the public hearings that are coming up, but. Pete?
You're mute, Pete.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, so the biggest, so the next public meeting for the public, I'm sorry, public, uh, public hearing will be for Zero McGonco. And uh, we have those plans and we'll send them out and uh, once we get new renderings and updated renderings of the buildings that I have asked for. Um, I'll get those out to the planning board as soon as possible. Um, Emma and I had a conversation with Joe and Dale. We're trying, we're gonna try to implement a cutoff date, uh, in or time, which would be the Monday, uh, at the, uh, end of business. For applicants to submit new material for the board, so we can give everyone a little bit more time to review the material and get that out to them. Um, so Emma and I are gonna be working on that and kind of coming up with some other stuff. However, from a, from a office kind of staff point of view, um, I can tell you that um, Emma and I have been working with uh, Beth Reynolds from the Economic Development uh, team, uh, to develop a outdoor seating, uh, annual guidelines. Um, that shall be implemented. So uh, we're working on that and, and we'll roll those out as soon as possible. Um, any uh, outdoor seating or proposed outdoor seating that would trigger um, may trigger site plan review if uh, if they trigger that site plan review, uh, or if they hit that uh, site plan review trigger regarding the six parking spots. Um, which would be they're either manipulating or added by addition indoor subtraction of six parking spots. And or they increase their current gross floor area indoor seating capacity by twenty-five percent. Um, so that is something that we're working on in-house, I would say in town hall. Um, then from a project standpoint, uh, eighty-one West Union Street Phase Two has started. Uh, they're doing some site work out there. Uh, we, and, and once Mr. uh, Rodenheiser submits building permits, I will alert the board. Uh, but I've been have, uh, I've had communication with him and, and, and we're trying to get that project off on a, on a, on a, on this, on a positive foot, I would say. After uh, phase one, uh, when it stray, so uh, that's where that project is. And then I also want to report back that Emma and I had a very positive um, reconstruction meeting for the public safety building. Um, over on uh, Union Street. And so that project is happening, it's underway. Um, most likely you will see uh, commencement indoor work start. Um, probably next Monday at the earliest. And so they're gonna get in there and, and start moving some dirt, cutting some trees down. Um, and to open up the area to, to really kind of um, start that process. And so it's gonna be, I'm, I'm gonna say it's a sixteen month process from start to finish. And so hopefully uh, sixteen months to eighteen months from now, we can say that we have a brand new public safety building in the town of Ashland. And so uh, if um, so maybe, you know, we could start thinking about indoor having ideas um, with the current police station and or the current fire station. Um, but really just to kind of start thinking about those right now. So um, from the in-house town hall point of view, those are the, the three items that I do want to mention to you tonight. Um, and our next meeting is going to be on March twenty-fifth. Um, and the town meeting, annual town meeting, uh, has been identified and or scheduled for June twelfth, which is the second Saturday in June, I believe.
So just, just, just as like a matter of oversight, you know, the public safety building and the Mendez building, when it goes into construction. Um, I assume we're gonna have layers of project supervision coming from in-house in their own teams. Um, you know, because usually architects have to sign off on work. Often there's a clerk of the works, there's kind of layers of supervision. On the other hand, it seems like twelve Pond Street and eighty-one West Union. You know, you know, maybe employ architects who aren't so on the ball or construction supervision that really isn't uh, necessarily wonderful. Um, so I wonder if, you know, what's the schedule of, um, you know, Doug's, you know, you know, bet on the job, what, maybe, maybe two months now? So I was wondering if, with those major projects, is part of his responsibility going to those buildings, you know, once a week?
Um, so Doug will dug in, I think myself, as the projects start, we, I will be attending the weekly construction meeting. Uh, I think most likely they'll start off on Zoom as then they will move to the site, uh, hopefully. Uh, but Trish, you know, those, those, all those things were discussed today. Uh, this call would include, this call included the architects who had presented to the planning board from HKT. Um, Vertek, who is the OPM, and then CTA, who is the contractor. Everyone was on the call. The pre-construction meeting had about twenty-two.
What do you mean? Is that for eighty-one, yes, West Union or was that?
No, this is for the public safety building.
Yeah, like I said, I'm less concerned with those because they're gonna have layers of supervision. What I'm wondering.
I'm sorry, oh yes.
Yeah, i- if Doug, like, say, is doing a, a walk around, you know, at least around the outside of the building, whatever our jurisdiction is for like twelve Pond Street every week.
Yep, Doug is, yep. He, he was over there and him and I have, have communicated and, and, and he is on the ball and he is up to speed with what's going on, especially with twelve Pond, eighty-one West Union.
And we also need to keep an eye because before when they did that other one, they had traffic issues and there were some issues.
Yes.
With traffic, then watering down the dust and all that stuff. So we have to make sure at the construction meetings, keep emphasizing that we gotta have a detail when you need it and more pull into the lot and have clean up the street.
Yep.
I don't, I, I don't think Doug could be on-site at eighty-five West Wing Union too much. I think, I mean, like, I don't think if he was there every day that that would be too much. Like honestly, I, I mean, in all, in all seriousness, so I.
And all of us, I mean, anybody who's driving by there too, which is how we kind of policed them a little bit the last time, is you gotta just keep an eye as citizens, you know, keep an eye on what's going on and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to.
Yep, no, I know, uh, our, our DPW staff with Evan and uh, Kevin Lay Meyer, they have been appointed as stormwater to, to, I would say in, in, enforce the stormwater bylaws, uh, with our conservation agent, uh, Megan. Uh, I can tell you right now, we're all on the same page regarding eighty-one West Union Street. And so um, I'm working with Bill and um, and, and I've, I've driven by there and, and checked out what's going on and I can tell you I'm in fairly fluid conversations and communication with the brothers, uh, as, as we, you know, as the, as weeks pass. Um, so with that said, Joe, you know, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying my best out there.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I'm just, I'm just like, just reiterating, I get it. Um, in terms of eighty-one West Union, um, and I'm, I'm, I need to go back and look at the decision. Is there any hanging chads on that decision? Like, is there any color choices or anything?
They do have to come back in front of us and present the construction plan. Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. And, and so, and then one of the other ones, which has been this kind of like dangling thing out there, which was the when they come back, which was the sign in front of the existing storage building.
Yep.
Um, right, like, I know there's been discussions, we, we've been trying to make inroads on that, on that thing, so is there any way to loop that? I just don't want to, you know, we have asked for follow-up. I know that you've been trying to work that well, like, if there's any update or progress on that, it would be cool.
Okay. I'll, uh, I'll put it on my radar.
Okay, any other board members have anything to report? Well, then I'll entertain a motion to.
I think Kathy will say something.
Okay, one more question. Does anyone else want to speak, Kathy?
Thank you. I've had my hand raised and chat for.
I was gonna, I was gonna take a motion to let Kathy speak, okay, so.
Oh, thank you.
That's what it was. I didn't forget about that.
Hey, I just want to know where I can get a copy of that fabulous picture, by the way, from you and, and your movie debut there.
I'll get you.
That was awesome. It's an awesome story.
Yeah, I was the only one in the whole place that had two guns. That whole brothel. I was the only one with two gun.
That's even better. The others must have been jealous. Come on, man.
Probably.
Alright, so um, I thought the walk we did for the downtown zoning was really, it was really helpful because you got to see like in situ what the zoning looked like. And over the next week, as I sort of drove around and looked at stuff, I realized that and, and I think that a lot of people don't realize this, there's a combination of residential and commercial zoning down there and the setbacks are different for it. So I don't know what they are right now, but it looks to me like the residential is set like thirty feet back, twenty feet back. And then that commercial can, can come almost all the way up to the road or up to the road. And so that might be part of the confusion with setbacks and massing that the public's having. So as you're thinking about all these setbacks, every residential place, even if it now has commercial in it, has a little green yard or shrubberies or some kind of perennial beds, trees, stuff like that, whereas the commercial don't. And I think people are expecting more of that with the setbacks. In addition to, you know, the idea of having now what's probably gonna be necessary for the future, the COVID-friendly dining spaces. We don't want people who do commercials set so far back on the road that they're not visible and not reachable or not easily reachable. So somewhere in there is a middle ground. But that was one of the things that, that really struck me. Um, and I know from sitting on design review that we really like things like all those details that everybody was discussing at the meeting. Um, including things like, so we've had lots of conversations with people about flat roofs and then hiding all the utilities on the roofs behind various screening devices. Are they doing solar on the roofs? Are they doing green roofs on the roofs, things like that? So those are some more ideas about details we can include. And then I don't know if we can use the fire as a tool to set limits, either minimums or maximum.
I think those are all things we're gonna look at, Kathy.
Yeah, well, I, I wasn't sure, like, you know, I would have spoken up at each one of these and added something in. So, um, under uses, um, no more dentists. I've heard that a few times from people all over town. Um, it would be awesome if we had grocery store, natural food store. Um, you know, I think that's one of the little things. It doesn't have to be a huge one, but a little one would be nice. And then I think that, I liked the discussion about the light industrial, because that was actually where I was sort of thinking like, what could we do down there? Um, because I was envisioning like, what if you had, you know, like a, some kind of a shop that manufactured something and then they had a showroom out in the front with glass windows. That would be, that'd be nice, pretty. I think those were my comments. Oh, I, I um, actually think it's pretty interesting. I don't remember what Zero McGonco Road is doing. What are they planning to do there?
Industrial, it's, it's garages for industrially used light manufacturing or contractors, plumbers, um, office warehouse type things. Small, small offices and.
I remember that now. Okay, can we, uh, are they doing offices or are they doing?
No, offices in the, you know, like the uh, construction bay things where you can pull your truck in, keep some supplies in there or small. We asked them about that. I don't know if they're gonna be doing like mechanics, mechanics places or anything like that.
They're gonna be coming back to discuss this, right?
They'll, they'll be explaining that when they come back.
And they'll also be in front of design review.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was, I was kind of wondering about that because um, it's one of the things we've been talking about with the trolley rail. Like what would that into the street look like when people walk down the trail? Because it's, you know, I don't know how many hundred, several hundred feet that is to hit the, you know, the intersection where Stone Park and the apartments are across the street. The dance, the dance studio is at the end of that street.
I, I think from what they did before, I, it's been a long time, but I believe we, they had landscaping all the way around the outside. Other than where there was going in and out and sidewalks.
Uh, they did, Dale, and, and I've seen the minutes, I've actually read the minutes from the design review committee and you guys were fairly thorough, Kathy, about landscaping on the parcel.
Yeah, I can vaguely remember it.
But we're gonna talk about this later, but we actually have a drawing in front of us, right?
Correct, yep.
Almost nine thirty.
Yep.
Yep, I just like the, the, I just was thinking about the end of the trail, because we've talked about it on the trail committee.
Keep that in mind when they come in.
Alright, thanks very much. That's all my comments.
Thank you, Kathy.
Uh, and just, just real quick before I go, and I know, uh, we're looking to get out, we're looking to stop the meeting. But I just want, I want to update everybody, uh, the UGC, which is the forty B development over at, over off of Memorial Drive. Uh, did start, I would say, two weeks ago. Is that correct, Emma? Um, and they, we're gonna go back in front of ZDA, but they got continued. Um, one element is we're also still, it's, it's a public hearing process for that forty B, so uh, all planning board members, you're, you're willing, you know, we, we'd love to have anybody submit comments and support and or um, you know, just not in support, but a, any comments that anybody wants to submit to this one of those appeals, that would be great. Um, and you can reach out to Emma and I to see the plans and, and to kind of get any other information, uh, with Emma and myself, so.
Peter, sorry, a forty B, where is this?
It's off of the MBTA, oh, Memorial Drive, right next to Service Apartments. It's a, it's a hundred and eighty unit forty B.
Okay, this is the friendly forty B that was done with the select board, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Same one.
Emma had a link to it in the email.
But any comments, we're collecting it, so take a look through the data and. But any comments, we're collecting it, so take a look through the data and uh, and the, and the uh, plans and whatever you want to send to us, we can obviously get that to the zoning board appeals on, on, in, in the public record.
Okay.
All right.
And did all of you get an uh, uh, invite to a consultant interview for the Ashland forty R proposal?
Everyone should have.
Yeah, I got mine tomorrow, so I just wanna.
Okay, I think Joe, Joe already had his, his conversation, uh, not interview, conversation with uh.
It says interview.
Okay. Uh, April, April Anderson, she's our consultant on the ten to fifty Main Street project. And uh, she's great, she's a professional. Uh, so I think, you know, really latched me, I would say, just kind of give her your, you know, let her, she'll ask you for her, your opinion and
Okay.
as a resident, as a planning board member.
Okay.
I don't think I got anything like that. Was I supposed to?
You, I will, I will connect the dots, Trish, uh, because you know, I.
I could have missed it. I, I don't know.
It's from April Anderson, just maybe check his spam because it's a um, signup survey one thing, so it doesn't look like a the signup genius in email that comes to you and after you sign, then her name comes up, so.
I mentioned you in my interview, Trish, so I told her, definitely talk to, you know.
Yes. She should be reaching out to everybody.
If you have email from signup genius.
From signup, okay.
Yeah, and then after you sign up, be careful because you're not gonna get like a Zoom invitation or anything. So i- i- it's like, I'll give you her phone number so you can call her for your time because it's.
Yeah, someone might wanna.
True, so what do you mean you won't get a Zoom invite? So I didn't look at the last time slot.
You're gonna, you're gonna sign up for a time and you're gonna like, it's gonna say you're signed up, but you're not gonna get an email with a Zoom or anything. She's just gonna call you at the appointed hour and yeah, so it's, it's a little, it was a little luck, yeah.
So I'm gonna give her your number, you should.
Yeah.
Yeah, you give her your phone number, right, so she calls you.
Trish, I know you're, you, you may want to check your uh, Ashland email address. Did I send it to that one?
Okay, um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look for it. I don't, I don't, didn't see anything like that, so.
Okay, I will email, I will connect the two of you right now, Tricia.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to. I know, I get up early, I just want to make sure everybody.
Okay, is there a motion to close the meeting now at nine thirty PM?
So moved.
Second that.
Home favor?
Trisha Kendall, I.
Lakshmi Krishnan, I. Deepavang, good day.
Joe Rubert, Tony, I.
Dale Buchanan, I. That passes five zero zero. Thank you very much, everybody.
It's a wrap.
Everyone.
Good night.
Hi, everybody.
Bye.
Have a great night.